I'd like to call the meeting in order for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrants and bills, you're all signed up? I'm all signed up. Approval of the agenda?
I'll move approval of the minutes. Uh, but we have no minutes, do we?
No, no, it's the approval of the agenda.
Oh, approval of the agenda, okay. Move for the approval of the agenda for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So you made a motion. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes on the last meeting.
They were. We both had a sat.
What's that?
They were in there. You had a, I left you a sat.
Yeah, I want to table that.
Yes, I hadn't had a chance to review them.
I haven't either.
So, thank you.
Okay, town administrator, weekly update.
All right, so question number one is now that we know when our special town meeting is, what are we doing about next week's selectmen's meeting? Because Mr. McGurty has a class on that Wednesday.
I believe what we tried doing was moving up the warrant finance and everything so we can make a recommendation tonight, so we, uh, we were gonna skip out on that, weren't we?
We're not gonna have a board meeting next week at all?
That, I think that was what the agenda.
Is there anything urgent that's gotta be tended to?
I mean, it's early, so, I mean, we can try, we can, as of now, no, because I've got everything on here.
Nothing on the budget process that we would hold up?
No, no.
I think right now with, uh, Kim being gone and you doing what you're doing, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Probably might be only one selectman anyway, so.
All right. I didn't know if you wanted to do another night, that's why I was asking.
I think we'd be fine.
Okay, just make sure you come and sign the bills.
Yep.
If something does come up and you need a meeting, how much time do you need to post that meeting?
Legally, three days.
Three days, so.
Ten days based on your policy.
If something comes up where you need a meeting?
Oh, you'll be the first to know.
I would be open to, you know, trying to find a date next week, so by Friday, we have to know.
Yeah, I'll know. It'll be fine, we can work most things out.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up, the, the audit was mailed out. Um, we sent it to the twelve different companies that were on the state's website as recommended. It was on, sent to the Portland Press Herald and also located on the town's website.
When's the response due?
I believe it was February sixteenth.
Okay, great.
I have a list of the auditing firms, should you want to see it.
Mm-hmm. Can I ask about that process? Do we have, uh, how are the audit firms, is there a form for interviewing them? Is it done at a selectmen meeting? How is that done?
So normally, um, or in the past, they've held a workshop and they've gone through them, uh, like, but the last couple of times that we've gone out to bid, um, we've only gotten one or two, so.
Yeah.
I think that you guys can set whatever process you deem, um, you know, adequate once you see how many come in.
Okay, is that a public process?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good, good.
We don't do it during a selectman, we do it at a.
No, I mean, you do a workshop, but it can certainly still be filmed and go through it.
Yeah, that's fine, but it would be open to the public and they could ask questions if they want.
Absolutely.
That kind of thing, good.
Once, we, we have to open them at a public meeting because we've asked for them sealed.
Yeah.
So we'll open them at a public meeting and then maybe next week you could schedule a workshop.
Very good.
The, um, one of the things that, uh, Tom had asked last week, um, that was about the, uh, fees for the audit, so we have that for you for the last three years. FYI twenty-one with the fixed asset fee that they include was thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. The year before, thirteen six fifty, and the year before was thirteen six fifty. So that's ninety-five hundred dollars for the town and thirty-nine hundred for the school. So in three years, we've seen an, an increase, um, of about a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
But it's thirteen thousand. All right. Uh, the other thing that you had asked for, uh, were the fees paid to Protection One, ADT, so I got three years' worth for, for you.
Okay.
Um, will you ask me?
No, I, I appreciate you following up, thank you.
Wasn't I supposed to?
Yes, you were.
Okay. Um, last year, the, or year-to-date for ADT is eleven hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, last year was two thousand seventy-two for the fiscal year, the year before that, two thousand, and then before that, fifteen hundred. So those stay about the same. There were some purchases in two thousand and twenty, the new camera system that we have.
Relating to that, okay, thank you. Thank you.
So just an update on the York County Sheriff's Department, uh, more for the public and more updated numbers for you guys. I did call you yesterday, which, um, to ask you about pulling it off, the warrant, uh, so the Warren Finance Committee could meet. Um, what I told you both yesterday was that if we waited until March first, that we would be all set and we wouldn't have to appropriate more money. We did that with an anticipated fourth quarter bill. The county had not gotten back to us, uh, they were kind enough to get back to us at the very last hour, so we've been able to put the actual fourth quarter bill in. Now we have, um, an estimated balance of over twenty-three hundred, so we essentially could pick up a deputy coverage right away if we wanted to. So now we, you know, we estimated twelve thousand for the fourth quarter, it came in at eighty-eight, we was estimating a little high.
Still gotta go through the hiring process.
No, I know, but I'm just updating you that we have enough money now, it's on the special town meeting, and we can move forward with interviewing. Um, so shall we think about scheduling that with Chapley?
Yes. Have they indicated they're willing to go in this direction as well?
Well, they, yes, yes, they've put the money on the, the warrant. Their vote is not until March eleventh, but, um, by the time we get the process started and they have the freedom to spend.
They do something different anyways, where they're allowed to spend up to.
They're three twelfths.
Yeah.
Yep. So just.
So they're planning to continue with the contract sheriff?
Through the end of two thousand and twenty-two, correct.
Very good.
Um, so in the past, what we've done, and it's for making sure it's the direction, so we've obviously invited the, any selectmen, you know, the selectmen from both towns. Um, usually the sheriff's department will send, uh, one or two representatives and we'll meet with the two candidates. We have more room than Chapley does, so we generally do it here.
Okay.
All right, we'll get those scheduled. Um, you did receive, this is more of an FYI, I'm not gonna read it aloud, but I did tell, uh, the individual that I would hand it to you, um, it's a letter that was received from, uh, in, um, regarding the proposed mineral extraction. It's just an informational letter, um, when the individual asked me if I would present it to you, I presented to you, I did explain that they had the right to be on the agenda if they wanted it, they could speak under public comment, so that's more just information at this point. We have had a request from someone to stop reading the Freedom of Information requests that we receive out loud in public comments, um, without reading the email that I received, um, because there was some personal information in there. They essentially feel like it's, it's, um, it's none of anybody's business what information they request. Um, I did speak to Richard Floellen at Main Municipal, and I explained to him, um, you know, that the Town of Acton works hard on transparency and the timing that we spend on a lot of these requests and, um, why I believe the board originally started doing it, um, and he said he were absolutely within your rights, it's all public information, you were, were within your rights, um.
I, I believe when, I, I kinda fronted this, and I, I did this because we spent so much resources on these, these requests.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, you, you'll have a request now and then of Joe Schmo or whatever, but you get the same.
So we had some last week on the pits.
Yep, yep, and, but if you get the same individual doing multiple ones, week after week after week, the Town of Acton should really know whether money's been spent.
We aren't disclosing who's asking, who's, who's.
Oh, yes, we are.
Yeah. Every, everyone.
Read the whole Freedom of Information, the name.
Yep.
What the request is.
Doesn't matter who you are, what the request is, we can read it off and it is what it is.
And MMNA says we're within our rights to do that.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
And I, I believe that's, um, as a taxpayer, not just a selectman, I want to know where our resources are going.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's a repeat offender, then people understand it.
Or, and sometimes, I mean, it's, I think it's just good information to have too, that sometimes at the other end of what people may be requesting.
Yep, that's right.
You know, I got a call last week, um, from one of the pit owners that said, you know, what, I, I heard you mention the pit on, you know, at the meeting as a Freedom of Information, someone came in and requested everything in three particular pits files. They just wanted to know, you know, it was, they wanted to know what, what or who was pulling, and, I mean, it's their property, so.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, um, I will tell them that you decided to stick with the same policy on that.
Mm-hmm.
Next, the, uh, school and I have, um, been working together with Warren Finance. They've put together their budget season, budget request, uh, timeline. Uh, we are looking to schedule the election on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, which is, uh, that would put absentee ballots available on March twenty-fifth. Uh, they've got a timeline together that I believe they presented to Warren Finance last night. Um, really the only, um, role that the Board of Selectmen has is to sign the actual warrant. We have that scheduled for March twenty-third. Um, public hearing is scheduled, everything is in here, this is more informational, we'll update you as it gets closer.
No, Kim is, Kim is our liaison, right?
Kim is our school liaison?
Uh, I am.
You are, okay.
Yeah, that's right, excuse me, yep.
Confusing.
So I'll make sure that you get a hard copy of this, um, certainly welcome to any of the meetings.
Very good.
Animal Welfare has sent the Town of Acton a letter just indicating that, um, just indicating that they are gonna have their first increase since two thousand and fifteen, um, and it's gonna be an increase of, uh, five percent, so we'll see that next year, but first one since fifteen.
Well, I think right now with everything being inflated like it is, that's five percent, sounds legit.
Have they been increasing every year right along?
No, not since two thousand and fifteen, they haven't increased.
I, I, okay, that settles it for me, I'm not sure.
Tripped out food and everything else is going on.
This is where we bring animals that the animal control officer might have that need to be housed?
Exactly, yep.
Yeah, okay.
All right, um, I did, I think that, uh, Tom, you mentioned at a meeting that you had spoken to, uh, Joanne Bargony, who is the reporter for the reporter, um, and I've been emailing with her and communicating, um, and we're gonna work out a schedule where I can start getting her happenings in Acton.
Wonderful.
She can start running in the paper.
That's great, thank you.
So. And then the last thing, um, that I wanted to mention and get the board's input on is, um, we've gotten a couple of concerns regarding sand at the sand and salt shed. Um, we have, um, been told that, um, more than one person may be taking, um, full-size pickup trucks down there and taking sand and then possibly using it for their own commercial, um, purposes. Um, we have a nice little shed near the road, I believe, that you can get sand at.
Small shed.
Small shed. Um, I don't know if, if the guys, I, I talked to, um, Adam about it, right?
Yeah.
If he wants to fill you in anymore. I mean, I, I took the complaints and I shared it with, because Kim is out, we shared it with David, the chair. It is a concern if someone is doing that, I don't know if more signage would help.
The, well, the, well, and I, I did talk to Adam about it, and, uh, back when I was real commissioner, we did talk about putting a, uh, Jersey Bear so they couldn't back in and just load their truck out.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, 'cause the problem is, it's not that, we, it's really icy out there, uh, we know that, I, I'd go out sand a bunch of driveways and I don't like doing that, it's not something I like doing anymore, but, do it because it's pretty bad, but what happens is when someone goes in and they load their truck up and they're off charging individuals for that sand, it's not right.
Yeah.
And what happens is too, is when someone goes out and loads their truck up, and when somebody else goes in, it's empty. So they're taking, you know, and these guys are having all they can do to keep up with keeping the thing full, so, you know, um, I, I just saw it on the news there, I forget what town it was up Main, they had the same thing, they had contractors going and loading their trucks up and doing driveways and stuff, and it's not really what it's for, it's for the taxpayer to go down and get what they need, but for themselves.
Do we have any posting down there that says, you know, what the, what's appropriate use of that sand? I assume it's for individuals' own use only?
Uh, we have no posting down there at all. Um, tomorrow I'm planning on taking one of the Jersey Bears we have and putting it in front of it.
Yeah.
And set it up so, you know, you really gotta walk in there with just your buckets and, that way they can't just back the trucks in there and stuff.
I see one ton in there the other day with a dump body and we're filling it up, and, you know, it's, uh, and what really sucks about that is it's not that, they probably need it, but it's when you got a line of people there waiting, they're five gallon buckets and they can't get in because they're loading their truck up, so, um, you can still be able to dump in.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna set it up so I can still dump in easy enough and that way it 'll slow down if you gotta take a pickup, you're gonna have to walk around with a shovel to do it and make it inconvenient for anybody that's trying to.
Do you want some, some sort of signs or just in case it doesn't stop, at least, you know what I mean, that what, the lawyers are gonna tell you is that, did you tell them they couldn't? So we should have something up there.
I think we should get some type of sign saying buckets, resident use only.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that too, yeah.
You know, resident use only, you know, five gallon buckets or something, we should come up with something that's a good type of signage.
Yeah, 'cause we want to do residents only and put down a.
Property owners only.
Uh, property, that's what I.
And it's for their personal use, I guess.
For their personal use, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, when you, when you backing a pickup and you're going out and plowing people's driveways and Chapley, Milton, everywhere else, we don't need that, our sand being spread all over York County and part of New Hampshire, so.
So we'll work out the wording between the three of us in the next day or two and we'll get something ordered.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Uh, that was all I had, sir chair.
Okay, okay, I guess we're gonna go down to department head, committee chair updates. Do we have any tonight?
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. Um, Jennifer and I spent a couple hours this morning, um, doing some of, most of the data entry for RSMS. Um, we did print a preliminary report, so there, there's a few holes that need to be filled in, so I think that if, you know, um, if she and I spend, um, maybe another hour or two, um, once I gather the rest of that information, we should be ready to roll with that, so.
Yeah, we did well, we got, um, all of the, um, data in that they had collected on a majority of the road, we created new roads on that, 'cause it comes with a, you know, it comes with basic roads on it, so we were able to add roads, like we had to add Flat Ground Road, um, some roads that were on there, we had to split into two sections if they were half paved, half gravel. I mean, I was pretty impressed with our skills to get that much done in that short amount of time, we, we got everything entered in.
We got a lot done in a couple of hours, so, um, so it's looking good, and I think, you know, um, as soon as I gather that information, I'll give Jennifer a call, we'll set up another time that's convenient and, um, and get it done, and then we'll train the, um, road commissioners how to update, so. And it's pretty simple, I think that they shouldn't have a problem with it.
Thank you for sticking with this and persevering. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a great thing you did, so, and in working with Jennifer the way you have, I think it's been great, so.
Yeah, so, um.
Thank you.
It looks good? Right, that's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we're gonna move down to old business policies.
Uh, we're gonna table them for this week, it's been a full plate with short staff.
ADT proposal.
So last week, uh, we didn't approve or sign this because, um, Tom was looking for some numbers, um, from ADT, which I think we've given him. Um, although this is not in the alarm line, it is in the building maintenance line, I've cleared it with the treasurer, it is fourteen hundred and forty-two dollars, and I'm asking that you let us replace this motherboard so that we can, um, get the system back up to par.
That amount is for the new board?
The motherboard, yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That makes it so they can do it from wherever they are, they don't have to come out here.
Right.
What, do we just have to sign it, or we need to?
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve the fourteen hundred and some whatever.
I'll make a motion to approve fourteen hundred dollars to buy a new, uh, a board from ADT for the security system, fourteen hundred and forty-two dollars.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, Freedom of Information request.
Uh, this first one comes from Jeff Donahue. Jennifer, in accordance with the Freedom of Information, I'm requesting the following information. The Town of Acton purchase policy at the time the heating system was at the town hall install bid was approved. Any and all bids related to the heating system that were installed at the town hall. A copy of the heating system contract signed by the selectmen. All three of the same above criteria for the window replacement at the town hall. Also from Mr. Donahue, um, a copy of the contract for the public access video service including fee schedule for the Town of Acton. Uh, Mr. Donahue, any contract signed paperwork by Andrea Donahue and myself, signed paperwork by selectmen, notes of code enforcement, any meeting notes for the meeting at the code enforcement office that led to the merger of lots eight and nine-two on tax map two fifty-two owned by Andrea Donahues Roberts and Jeff Donahue. I'm doing my best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, where are we here? Warrant recommendations.
All right, so we are looking for, uh, recommendations of the, to see if the town will adopt the following moratorium ordinance on mineral pits. The Warren Finance did meet last night and, uh, the recommendation to adopt the moratorium failed zero to five, so we are looking for a Board of Selectmen's recommendation.
Want to start?
Um, yes, um, I think before I, uh, I think I want to make some comments about, I've had a chance to, uh, attend, uh, the many meetings on this, I did not go to the Warren Finance Committee meeting last night, but I have gone to some other meetings about this, and clearly it's a hot topic in the town, uh, people have opinions both for and against the moratorium. Um, I've developed my own view, and before I vote, I just wanted to explain the basis for that. I think it's important for that to be out on the record. From what I've been able to gather, most of the concerns seem to be expressed around concerns with compliance over, uh, existing permits, and, uh, the moratorium really doesn't address anything with regard to the operations of existing pits and permits, and so I, I don't think the moratorium is really gonna address what I've heard as the majority of concerns about pit operations. It's unclear to me what the objectives are of the, of the moratorium, um, at a very specific level. Of course, the, the wording on the moratorium is, I think, general enough that, uh, it can, it can cover a whole variety of things, but for me, I'd like to have, I wished I had had an opportunity to hear more specifically what the concerns were, uh, that led to the moratorium and how that was gonna be used to address specific issues, and I, I just didn't feel that that information was forthcoming. I, I also believe that, uh, that correctly, or, uh, that it's been stated that the planning board has, through existing ordinance, ordinance, ordinances, excuse me, that the planning board has the ability to address any concerns with the permitting of new pits already. So again, it just wasn't clear what the moratorium was trying to achieve, what its goal or objective was, um, that couldn't already be satisfied with, um, the administration of new permit requests within, within the existing guidelines and regulations. I think these pits have a long history of activity and operations in the town, they're, they employ a number of people who are residents of the town, and so I'm concerned about putting any kind of moratorium on new pits until there's more clarity about exactly what the issues are and why that would be appropriate. I think it unjustly penalizes, uh, individuals requesting new permits if the concerns are primarily regarding compliance with existing pits. So I, I felt that, uh, was an element of the, the moratorium that I, I just felt wasn't I think there's, there's an opportunity with the pit that's being proposed to try to contain some residential development in an area that I think, um, would be beneficial to the town while also adding to conservation land and recreational use of that land, uh, which I think is in benefit of the town, and so, um, I, I just think that's important to keep in mind. I think we should focus on resolving any concerns there are about violations with existing permits and pits, and I think that's something that ought to be investigated. If there are, if there are concerns being raised by residents or others about the operations of the pit and them not operating in compliance with the, with the, with the permitted use of those operations, I think that's something that we ought to aggressively pursue and understand what the facts are, and if there are concerns, address it. Um, I also think there's an op, it heard from the pit owners, and I, I think, um, uh, many people in the town, there's an interest in getting together and trying to work in a collaborative way to resolve these issues, um, short of actually doing a moratorium, and I, I think, I think that is an important step for us to take, um, that would acknowledge the right of citizens while also acknowledging the rights of landowners, and I think there are two, I think everyone has legitimate issue here, and, um, those ought to be balanced and recognized in whatever sort of action comes out of this. So, those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Sir?
Nope, nope.
Can you get off?
No.
No.
Um, we're making our recommendations. Uh, so, I've, I had to put a lot of thought into this because when the head of our planning board and our code officer, I, when I spoke to them, um, you know, I think they have good intentions.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of good intentions here. Unfortunately, the public hearing we had turned into something different. I don't think it was explained correctly, um, because what I was getting out of the planning board chair and the code officer was different than what happened during the public hearing. It got turned into one pit, you know, this and that, and, um, where it was multiple issues. So, it was a little frustrating the other night because I knew what was supposed to be going on, and that's not really what was explained, so it was tough for me at that point. Um, I do understand the concerns that, and I'm the one who gets the phone call, 'cause I typically, when, if, when it comes to the road stuff, not, not, I'm not the liaison, but, you know, I got involved because of, um, a lot of the complaints. I may even been the liaison at the point in time, I think I was, and, uh, there is, there is issues. Um, I think a lot of these issues brought this forward. Unfortunately, the issues that are being brought forward aren't a zoning issue, it's a law enforcement issue.
Yeah.
So I think that had a lot to do with it.
Yeah.
Uh, as a large truck owner, many of them, I, I listen to some of the stuff that's been said in the last couple of meetings, and it just blows my mind, because, um, when I hear, oh, they're taxpayers, doesn't mean they can ruin our roads. Um, if you knew what it cost me to register my truck for overuse tax, you would understand that I have every right to use that road.
Sure.
Then there's three, three months out of the year that I get little orange stickers up saying I can, okay? But I do understand the concerns, because honestly, my wife got ran off the road by one of those trucks, okay? And, um, and I did not like the, uh, the way that, um, this pit owner went about it, but it is what it is. That was, that was between me and that pin owner, and I'm not gonna turn around and, um, the other pin owners get, you know, criticized for one pin owner's issue, um, but at the end of the day, there is stuff that needs to be taken care of. I believe that, and I explained this last night at the Finance Committee, uh, I appreciate it, Dennis, you let me speak when I did, um, that there's some inconsistencies that need to be addressed. Um, when we talk about the water quality and all that, we all do know that the states regulate this stuff anyways. We know that stuff's not gonna be, um, you know, pushed under the rug, it can't be. There's one thing that we do have to do in town is, when there is a so-called violation, uh, us as a select board, um, if the, if the complaint isn't being addressed, make sure it's addressed. I think that would curb a lot of it. I think a lot of the information that was put out was vague, people didn't understand it.
Yeah.
But, um, as a select board member, when the planning board came to us, we said we would put it to a special town meeting and let the town do their thing.
Right.
Doesn't mean that I agree with it.
That's right.
There's stuff that I do agree, but I don't know if it takes 180 days to do that. I believe it's going to take longer. I don't want to see, as a property owner and people who drive the roads and a truck owner, I don't want to see truck owners in general get wrongly accused of doing stuff because they got the right to do it. So we are the town of Acton. We do have to go by state regulations also. But this moratorium, I believe, I don't, I believe it's going to take longer than 180 days to do it right. And at the same time, you have pit owners that, and not just one, I want to make this clear, there's more than one pit owner that wants to do other stuff. And to put a moratorium forward with the presumption that you were allowed to do it, and you made these financial, you know, financially you've gone and made these purchases, and you've looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance says you're allowed to do it, then to turn around and say you can't, that, to me, is, it's tough. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no on it for now, unless something changes. But my recommendation right now would be to vote no. But we are allowing the town to vote on it.
That's right.
And that's the way that, I'm going to roll with it for now. And I could change my mind. I probably won't, but, because I wouldn't be very professional to me come up here and say no, then turn around and say yes. So that would be misleading the taxpayer. So at this point in time, I'm going to roll like that.
So what the moderator has asked, and we kind of spread this with all our committees across the border, is to make a motion of a positive affirmative. So make, one of you make a motion to approve the article as written and it's seconded, then based on the testimony I've heard from both of you, David will call for a vote, all in favor, neither one of you will vote, all opposed, both of you will vote. So at least, so it's not a confusing motion for the voters. I will tell you that there is a lot of talk, obviously, going around about this, and I've gotten a lot of calls, and I just ask everybody watching and everybody listening that's going to be at the meeting to take it into consideration that a lot of people are really hoping for a written secret ballot. And I just want to take a second to explain how that works at the town meeting.
But they can make the motion at the town meeting.
I know, I know. I just want to go on record, so I've explained it because we've gotten so many calls. So once the town meeting happens on February 2nd and the moderator is elected, someone has the right to ask the moderator to vote on the article by written secret ballot. Because there has been insinuations, comments concerned, whether they're employees of some of these companies or just residents of town that want to be able to vote in privacy. So they, you have the right to ask the moderator to make a motion to vote by secret ballot. It has to be seconded, and a majority of the people present at the meeting have to support your wish to vote by secret ballot. If that happens, then the clerk passes out yes or no ballots, and you vote that way, and it's counted. Some people are just worried, they don't want to have to do a show of hands. I'm not here to debate either way. I just want to make sure that everybody knows.
I have no problem with that.
It's their right to do that.
They're right. So that's the process, and we will be prepared either way. So how about a motion on Article 2?
I'll make a motion to approve the moratorium as written.
Approve the article as written?
The article as written and presented by the planning board and the Warrant and Finance Committee.
Well, the Warrant and Finance did not.
No.
They didn't approve it, so we don't want to add that in.
They do their own.
Approve the article as written.
Approve the article as written.
Second. All in favor?
All right, all opposed. All right. So it's going to, on there, the Warrant and Finance, approve the article as written, will appear zero to five. Board of Selectmen, approve the article as written, will appear zero to two. Perfect. Done. What?
No. Good.
You opposed it.
Yeah, I opposed it. Yeah, I just want to make sure we were on the same page here. Okay, where are we? We're going to move down to poll permit application.
Mills Road.
Mills Road?
Mills Road, poll seven.
State Road.
I go back to these poll permits every time. They tell us that it's informational, although they require a signature before they'll install it, so.
Is this telephone poll?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seven. Does the utility company install that?
Yes. CMP, or they outsource it.
Okay, well, this is, where's the location here? Wherever, so Mills Road. They don't give an address, they just give.
So this is on a public way or is it on someone's property?
There's the, he'll give you all the details, yeah. It's on a public way, yeah.
They only do these on public ways. I mean, like this here, honestly, it's a state road. David? So where was I? Oh, this is on a state road, so in theory, the state should be signing this up, but it's town of Acton, so.
Because it's in the town, they require it.
It is what it is, it's in the right way, so.
Training and.
I make a motion to approve the poll permit for Mills Road, poll seven.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, so last page, there's a place for your signature.
Yep. It's like a formality.
It is, it's.
Okay, I got the top page right there for you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm missing one here. That just goes with the package. I'll take it over for you.
Thank you.
Okay, down to D, resignation.
Last evening, we received an email that I forwarded to you. It reads, "Dear Jennifer, I resign from the Warrant and Finance meeting tonight as there was perceived to be a conflict of interest with my activity participating on both the Warrant and Finance and Planning Board as to planning board issues. I have decided that the town is best served by board and committee members able to fully participate in decision-making on their respective boards or committees. All the best, Bernard Broder." So you need to.
I was there at that meeting last night when that conflict of interest thing came up, and, I don't know, I was a little discouraged with that because I honestly, at the end of the day, I didn't think it was a big deal. I think he should have been able to vote for that. But it is what it is. He did make a remark that he thought that he must, he might want to resign because of the issue, so I guess make a motion to accept the resignation for Mr. Broder.
I'll second it, but I'd also would like to acknowledge Bernie's contribution to the Warrant and Finance Committee.
You certainly don't have to accept it if you want to try to speak to him.
No, I.
That's your choice.
He's an intelligent man. He knows.
Well, I don't know that.
And so I respect his decision. I just want to acknowledge, I think he's a very, he does extraordinarily good work for the town. I just want to acknowledge that.
Absolutely.
I, if it wasn't for the idea he made a remark at the beginning that he may have to make that, then what happened at the end of the meeting? If it was what happened at the end of the meeting, I would obviously ask him to stay on. But he'd already made the remark at the beginning that he may have to, so.
Well, he made it after he was, he's politely asked essentially to.
I understand his frustration because I, you know, it was kind of an odd situation. So.
All right, so we motion and seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Dennis, we'll look at the alternates again and shift accordingly.
Okay, signed special meeting, town meeting warrant.
So the final warrant needs to be signed, so we need a motion to sign it and second it, but you'll have to come to my office because obviously I didn't know what your recommendation was going to be, so I couldn't have it pretty tight. But I don't leave without signing it, please.
So do we need a motion on that?
A motion to sign it as presented.
Okay, motion to sign it as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
And I'll get your signatures before you leave.
Yep. Okay, we head down to public comment. Dennis Long, I wanted to wait till after you guys dealt with that resignation before I said something. I too regret Bernie feeling the need to resign, and it's going to be a loss to the committee because I thought he brought a lot to the plate. Thank you. Anybody else? I see none.
Mr. Crowley?
Oh, there we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Crowley.
Address of Selectmen, in reference to what is going on with special town meetings, you know, this town needs to find out where we're going in the next 30 years, not where we've been 30 years ago, where I believe a lot of our regulations are in the past and need to be looked at. Been a lot of talk amongst the taxpayers, and I guess I was chosen to speak to the Selectmen in reference to forming a committee backed by the Selectmen to do a survey of where the towns taxpayers, and I say taxpayers, lake people as well as townspeople, where they think that this town's going to go in the next 30 years. What are they looking for? Are they looking for commercial business in the town? Are they looking to stay a, you know, a bedroom community? What direction do we need to go in the next 30 years? By putting a committee together and being backed by the Selectmen to send out a questionnaire of all, all different questions about where they think we have to go. Because it's not three people, it's not five people. What you want to hear from is all the people. And I think by getting a committee and doing this, sending out a survey would come back with a lot of important information. Something that when we go to make our decisions on where we're going, hopefully, we can make some educated decisions so we don't get into, you know, quick fixes like we are right now.
What would that quick fix be?
So.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, are you done or?
I'm done.
Okay.
I just asked a question.
David asked him a question.
Huh?
I asked the question.
Oh, okay.
But he would answer it. What quick fix would we be talking about?
Pardon me?
What quick fix are we talking about?
Well, going for special town meetings, for marijuana, for gravel pits, for the next thing you're going to have is a big industrial company come in. Where do you go from here? Do you have another special town meeting to try to stop that? You need to come up with a.
Well, honestly, at the end of the day, Mr. Crowley there, so when we have this special town meeting, and we, and you know why we're having this, correct? Because the planning board felt that it was urgent, and we felt as.
Our regulations, our regulations in this town are 30 years behind. We need to bring them up to date. The planning board is.
The job of the planning board is to bring that up to date.
But instead of having five people with the ideas, it would need to be good to have the town taxpayers.
May I ask you a question? I believe the planning board is undertaking an update to the comprehensive plan. If I got that verbiage correct?
Kind of.
But having read the comprehensive plan, some of the things that you cited here, it seems to me those are things that are in fact covered in the comprehensive plan. And as I understand that process, they have a, they have a mechanism for reaching out to residents to seek their opinion. And there's actually a survey, I think, that goes out to residents, asking questions about, many of the questions that you're describing. So I guess I would say that for at least certain aspects of which you're describing, there may already be an effort underway. Now, perhaps you're thinking of issues beyond what the comprehensive plan would cover. And if that's the case, then we should think about that. But no one's from the planning board here. Jennifer?
So, because I've been speaking to the code officer and the planning board chair about this, the planning board actually doesn't, doesn't write the comprehensive plan. When the comprehensive, town of Acton's comprehensive plan was last written, it was in 2005, and that's exactly the first thing that happens, is the capital, the comprehensive plan committee as appointed by the Board of Selectmen, not the planning board, created a survey, and the survey was mailed out to every property owner. That information, then the comprehensive plan committee sat down in this Excel spreadsheet, tallied and put it together. So it's not a planning board. The last time it was done, there's nothing in the zoning about it.
I'll stand corrected, but I thought I was at a planning board meeting where they discussed doing this.
Oh, they did discuss it, but it's outside of there.
Oh, okay.
They discussed it.
My ignorance then. I just assumed it was in their purview.
Yeah, the, I mean, the comprehensive plan, and they reference the document a lot. So it is very, it's very beneficial to them to have it up to date. But everything that you listed off would be a great reason, if the board agrees, to think about reforming a comprehensive plan. Because the 2005 comprehensive plan, if you go through and read it, they can't use it as a reference anymore because it is so outdated.
Very much so.
So maybe the first place would be starting to, if you, you know, I mean, it needs to be updated at some point anyway.
We already know that.
So maybe we can look for people that might want to serve on it?
But, I mean, but I guess what I'm getting to is with the remarks you made about the marijuana and the gravel pit and this and that. So I like to answer the, so the special town meeting is for a moratorium so that the planning board can adjust the ordinances. We're not doing any, we're not, we're not doing anything.
My issue is, I've been, I spend a lot of time in the planning board with my businesses and trying to do stuff that doesn't fit in what it is. What's going to happen if you get somebody come in and want to put up a 100-unit apartment It's off a hard to build, get a permit to put two apartments in, never mind 100.
Yep.
That's, that's the stuff.
You've got apartments.
That's the stuff you've got to look forward to, to see down the road, what do the taxpayers want.
And I understand that.
The difference too, though, is even if the comprehensive plan puts all that information together, and that's exactly what it is, it's data from all of the property owners, residents and non-residents, and that's what the comprehensive plan committee would do, is gather all that. But at the end of the day, as far as getting permits for those large subdivisions or housing units, it's going to come down to what the voters put in the zoning ordinance.
This is my opinion only, is there is a divide between the taxpayers or the residents versus the summer people. There shouldn't be.
But what do you, but that doesn't make any sense. Because you, what you're saying is, if I'm from Methuen, Mass. or PBD or wherever, you know, you want to come up and restructure the way the people who actually live here.
I think they ought to have the right to speak at a Selectmen's meeting, at a town meeting.
And they do.
They do.
They do not have the right.
Yes, they do. They can come up here like anybody else, can come up here and speak, they always do. Only, no. At a, at a town meeting, yes. And anytime that we do that, we always let them speak.
And that's state regulated, Mr. Crowley.
I think the core of what, if I can jump in here, I think the core of what you're asking for is that we should update the comprehensive plan.
Most definitely.
And now I'm understanding that that's not the planning board, it's the Selectmen's obligation to do that. I think, given that it's so outdated, and it's actually a requirement in the state that we have up-to-date comprehensive plans, is my, is that, is that a reason?
That is true.
So it's out of date, and we got to update it. Now, the question is, how do we go about identifying committee members if that's the approach?
Well, we, I mean, we would need to advertise it for a couple of weeks, see what kind of interest there is, you know, educate people on the current comprehensive plan and, you know, what kind of idea, you know, what kind of work might be entailed.
Could, I would suggest, I would, go ahead, please.
The biggest problem I have as a businessman on Hubbard Ridge is having a 600-foot commercial zone right where my business is, with all kinds of restrictions, what I can do, what I can do. Commercial zone A, you go across the street, there's no commercial zone, it's.
And I feel like, I feel like there's two different issues here that Mr. Crowley has. I mean, those issues that you've just mentioned, and I'm sure very, very accurate, are a planning board issue. They have to go, they have to bring a proposed zoning change to the voters to make that change in that commercial area, if that's the recommendation of the voters. That's not going to be addressed in a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is going to be information that, it's just going to be informational, and you can spend all that time putting that document together. And I think Joyce and I, Joyce and I had this conversation about capital improvement, same thing. They're gathering all this information, they're going to put it all in front of you, but at the end of the day, it's just information that, you know what I mean? The same is true with the comp plan. Those zoning concerns you have, you really should be in front of the planning board because right now, they're working on zoning changes to go before the June warrant. So they need to hear the concerns of zoning changes. They've got two public hearings.
I've been on the planning board.
No, I know.
And you guys addressed, you guys were looking at that issue on the planning board, weren't you?
Pardon me?
Weren't you addressing that issue when you were on the planning board?
Yes, we were.
Have they moved forward with it?
They've got it turned down by the Selectmen and tabled. Some of the articles that we brought.
We can't turn that down.
I think what he's talking about, I think that when COVID happened, we took all of the zoning articles, didn't put any zoning articles on the warrant because at that time it was our first time voting by secret ballot.
He has an opportunity to bring that back to the planning board.
1 million percent.
And bring that issue back up. And I think that that's appropriate place for you to bring that up. If I could suggest with the comprehensive plan, Jennifer, if you could just kind of lay out a process.
Yes, sir.
For how we could go about updating the comprehensive plan, and maybe we could look at that at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And Mr. Crowley, we can, we can pull those same zoning ordinances that were, they were taken off the Board of Selectmen for a space issue only. We have those same written warrant articles, and they're working on voting on articles to move forward now. Their deadline is not until the second week of February, so I can print those off and you can bring them back to them to reconsider. Absolutely, there's still time for that.
I would like to thank you for your time and listening to me. I appreciate it, you know, and hopefully, we can see some changes in the future come down, and for the, for the best to the town of Acton. Thank you.
We're all lined on that.
Any more public comment? Okay, well, we're going to do announcements, I guess. January 20th, we got planning board at 6:00 PM. January 24th, finance, Warrant and Finance.
That's a, that's a no, that's noopsies. It's not scheduled.
It's not scheduled, yeah.
31st.
We moved it up.
That's the 31st? Okay.
Yeah, it's down twice.
24th is gone.
Okay, so negate that.